I call this Onslow County Board of Commissioners meeting to order. Let us have our prayer, Ms. Moxley, if you would, and then we'll pledge allegiance to the flag.
Let us pray. Loving and gracious God, thank you for giving us another day and for your many blessings in our lives. As we begin our meeting tonight, we ask your guidance and wisdom in conducting the business of the county. We recognize that order, progress, and prosperity rely upon the effective, skillful, and dedicated leadership that we have on our board. Teach us to be positive in our attitudes, courageous in the face of difficulties, and wise in our decisions. Be with these commissioners as they begin the work of tonight's agenda, and bless them with insight, foresight, and wisdom in governing our county. Almighty God, thank you for the commitment and dedication of the volunteers and others we recognize here this evening, who through their efforts transform the lives of our citizens one community at a time. Heavenly Father, we also ask for the protection of our first responders. We are grateful that these brave men and women have devoted their lives to our safety, protection, and health. They respond to our urgent needs without hesitation or reservation. Our prayer is that you will bestow many blessings upon them. Almighty Father, watch over our men and women in uniform, inspire us to lead with integrity, help us to be good stewards of that which has been entrusted to us, and grant us humility in all we do and say. Now, with deep respect for the faith traditions and beliefs of all who are gathered here, hear us in a moment of silence. Mr. David Cotton, Deputy County Manager, will now lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of United States of America and to the Republic for which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone here tonight. We appreciate you coming out. It's always good to have Sheriff Hans Miller with us. We have two opportunities for the board to speak, for the public to speak to the board tonight. The first opportunity is three minutes, and your comments are to be kept to the agenda items. Later in the meeting, there will be an opportunity for five minutes for public comments. You can speak on any matter at that time that the commission has authority over. We ask you to sign up in the back of the room, and you will be called in the order that you signed up. As you come forward to the podium, please give your name and address to the clerk for our records. Address your comments directly to the board in its entirety. There will be no conversation with the audience, and we ask you not to promote a candidacy or a business. The board reserves any comments to Commissioner comments, which will be at the end of the meeting. Thank you for participating in our meeting tonight. At this time, we will need a motion to adopt the agenda.
I need to make a motion to amend the agenda to item 5B, consideration for the FPL lease.
Do I have a second to amend the agenda? Okay, I have a motion and a second to amend the agenda. Is there any other items that need to be amended on this agenda? Hearing none, all in favor of amending the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, can I have a motion to adopt the amended agenda?
So moved.
Now, second?
Second.
All in favor of adopting the amended agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, first public comment, I mean consent agenda, a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Now, I have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. Now, our first public comment. Mr. Manager, has anyone signed up?
Yes, Madam Chair, Commissioners, this is the first public comment period. During this first public comment period, there will be a three-minute time limit. In accordance with the board's rules of procedure, Commissioners shall reserve responses, if any, for the Commissioner comment period at the end of the agenda. All comments must be directly issue-oriented with the agenda items on for this meeting's agenda. That is, during this first public comment session only. The first individual that signed up is Scott Johnson of 2234 Perm Drive, Jacksonville?
Perry Drive.
Perry Drive, Jacksonville. Mr. Johnson, you have the podium for a time period not to exceed three minutes. This podium here in the center, sir.
Good evening, Chairman Eichner and the board. My name is Scott Johnston. I am currently serving as Chief of Staff of the Medical Community at Onslow Memorial Hospital. I believe I'm addressing item number six on your agenda tonight, which is the reappointment and appointment of board members. You currently have four names listed. I believe in your previous meeting, there was a physician who was nominated that was disqualified due to county citizenship. There's been a grassroots movement among the physicians at Onslow to become more involved, to be active and representative of the physicians, to push forward what we believe is a healthy leadership environment for the physicians in our community, as well as the authority. After that last submission of names, which was Dr. Beth DeAngelo and currently Mr. Darner, as well as the three current sitting members of the board, the physicians petitioned the authority to rescind the automatic nomination to go from Dr. DeAngelo to Darner, which was, I believe, from the July meeting or August meeting, so as to give time to submit additional physician names who have put in their names for nomination for the hospital authority. We do have two qualified physicians, Dr. Gopeshan and Dr. George Thomas. Dr. Gopeshan is in the office at this time. Those people have not had an opportunity to present to the authority and plead their case for further and additional representation of physicians on the authority. We currently only have one physician. Should be noted that in a number of authorities and hospital boards, physicians are either the chair, can be CEOs, and are often much more represented than they are in our current authority. So my request for the board tonight is to consider tabling the current motion to proceed with the nomination of the existing board members, resending it back to the authority to consider additional or alternative nominations, including the current physicians who sit in the potential pool that were not previously available.
Thank you, Doctor.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. The next individual that signed up is Dr. Sean Scully of 1401 Something Hollow Lane.
Bear Hollow Lane.
Bear Hollow Lane.
Yeah, I don't have much to add. I just want to echo what Dr. Johnson said. I think that there are very qualified people that have put their names forward and are interested in serving on the hospital authority, and I think they deserve the chance to be considered. And the timing of the way things evolved this year kind of precluded that. So in concert to what Scott said, I'm asking you to consider a larger pool of applicants before you make any decisions. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next individual that signed up to speak is Dr. Ishwar Gopeshan of 1643 Houghtown Road, Jacksonville.
Good evening, Honorable Commissioners. I see you all again. The Chief of Staff, Scott Johnson, our Vice Chief of Staff, Sean Scully of Onslow Memorial Hospital, medical executive committee have elaborately and eloquently mentioned the need for physician participation, expanding the base of applicants to the Onslow County Hospital Authority for three reasons. Number one, we need better governance. Number two, we need physician representation and provider representation, not just from doctors, but from middle-level providers, nurse practitioners, midwives, and ancillary staff in the affairs of the hospital authority. Fifteen years ago, the hospital went through a major turbulent change where the whole entire hospital authority slate was removed or resigned, and the sea of change came in under the leadership of Dr. Piper, which fifteen years later has shown that we are in positive worth. We're making money. The hospital has good governance, but I think what was left behind was listening to the doctors, listening to the providers, the caregivers, the first-line people in the hospital, people that deal with the patients face-to-face. And all those ideas, all those suggestions, all those comments have pretty much been, just didn't have that energy or impact that we have. Now, fifteen years later, we're going through a transition. Onslow Memorial Hospital is going through an LOI, which I cannot, which, based on what it has said, cannot be divulged in meetings like this, but in closed session, with Wyden and East Carolina. We also have the military naval hospital expanding, and we have other hospitals coming to our institution. But the important thing is, Onslow Memorial Hospital is in such a flux right now that we need to have physician input, we need to have physician participation. I come in as a member of the medical community, I come in as a member of the Committee of Onslow County for the last 20 years, and I have seen the county grow from 90,000 to 160,000, and we're projecting 200,000 people. But we need doctors, we need providers, but we need voice in the governance of Onslow County Hospital Authority. We do appreciate that the Commissioners or one of the representatives come back to hospital authority as well, to be active participants in the deliberative process and the consultative process of this authority. Dr. Johnson and Dr. Scully have already mentioned eloquently what the process is, and there is also one step I'd like to take further. Please review the document that was signed by the Commissioners and the hospital authority three years ago, which limits the number of participants, the number of qualified personnel, the number of qualified citizens who can apply and whose names can be submitted for your decision-making process. So please revisit that document, and at the same time, please make the decision to table pending the review of more qualified applicants to the appointment, reappointment process of Onslow County Hospital Authority. At 15 seconds, I'd like to thank the Conservative Human Services for having a seamless transition, and I'd like to thank the Commissioners for doing that, for getting our directors in the right path and building a new building for Onslow County. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Doctor.
Madam Chair, that concludes the individuals that have signed up for the first public comment period.
Very well. Could you take items four, five, and six, then, and we will proceed.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item four, presentations, A proclamation. There are two proclamations that have been prepared for presentation this evening. The first is a First Responder Appreciation Week proclamation of October 11th through 17th, 2015. At this time, I'll read that proclamation into the record. State of North Carolina, County of Onslow, proclamation, First Responder Appreciation Week, October 11th through 17th, 2015. Whereas individuals, both career and volunteer, from 911 dispatch, law enforcement, fire, emergency medical services, search and rescue, and other public safety sector organizations come together as a collective to protect and aid the public in the event of an emergency. And whereas every day, first responders bravely and selflessly risk their lives to protect Onslow County families, visitors, and businesses. And whereas Onslow County's first responders never falter in their attempts to save the lives and property of others 24 hours a day. And whereas first responders and their families are a vital part of our community, not only standing ready to deal with emergencies, but also volunteering with our schools and community organizations. And whereas first responders continually hone their skills and expertise to successfully respond to every type of emergency situation. And whereas these heroes rush forward for us, may we remember to stand for them and never forget that an efficient, high-quality first responder system is crucial to ensuring care during any emergency. Now, therefore, the Onslow County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim October 11th through 17th as First Responder Appreciation Week in Onslow County and her municipalities, presented on the 21st day of September 2015. Representatives of our local first responder community are asked to please come forward at this time to accept the proclamation. Chairman Eichner requests that the entire Board of Commissioners come forward to present the proclamation. Madam Chair, Vice Chair, and Commissioners.
I was going to have to share. On behalf of not just my fellow Commissioners, but the entire citizens of Onslow County, there are not enough words to speak tonight to let you know how deeply we cherish our first responders. Many of us in this county have had firsthand experience with needing the services that is so proudly provided by just a representation of these men and women behind me. I'm so proud of the people that step up every day and say, "I will be there when you need me," citizens of Onslow County. You should be deeply appreciative. This Board of Commissioners have the utmost gratitude for these men and women. Thank you. Would any of the other Commissioners like to say a few words?
More about the unity of all. We don't have to say thank you enough. You've heard about me many, many times. The rest of you should just say the same thing.
I would like to mention that you have--
Would you like to come to the microphone?
I would like to mention that Chairman has instructed staff at our last meeting to have a memorial ceremony for the first responders to show how we support our first responders because they are our first line of defense out here that serve and protect our folks. And thank you, Madam Chair, for putting that together, instructing that to be put together.
And it is coming together, so we hope on October 16th to be having a ceremony. Norm, would you like to come forth, and I'll present this to you, and on behalf of the county Commissioners? Thank you all. Thank you.
I would like to thank you all. Of course, I'd like to thank our Commissioners for providing this for us. In Onslow County, we have about 1,400 responders, whether it's law enforcement, fire, rescue, or EMS in this county. So actually, you're looking at less than 1% of the population is protecting the rest of the population. Behind me, I have a small group of paid and volunteer professionals that every day that wake up and go out and do their jobs, and I also would like to thank them as well.
Thank you. Let's give them all a big hand.
I'd also say before, we're going to feed all the public safety officers in the county with no taxpayers' money.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, with your permission, before moving to the next item, county administration and staff can report to the board on a couple of items that we are prepared for, for October 11th through the 17th, as the public is watching this evening's meeting, and it would be a good opportunity to inform the first responders that are still in the room and those that might be watching.
By all means.
At the direction of the board, staff has moved forward, and we're pleased to announce that we will be ready for a groundbreaking ceremony for the Public Safety Memorial at the entrance to Burton Business and Industrial Park at 4:00 PM on the 16th of October, which is a Friday, following the groundbreaking of that memorial, which will memorialize and honor those members of our county, government, employees, law enforcement, paramedics, as well as county volunteers, firefighters, and rescue squad members that have lost their lives in the line of duty. There will be a monument. It's being constructed by Professor Carl Billingsley of the East Carolina University School of Art, and it'll be erected on property set aside by this Board of Commissioners, and that groundbreaking will happen at 4:00 PM on the 16th of October. In addition, we are very proud to announce that we are in the process of collecting donations, and we're pretty far along to offer to every first responder in Onslow County an opportunity for them to come out and have a meal from the community to them. A lot of times, honestly, and those in the audience and those of you watching know that a lot of times, you know, it's the firefighters that are cooking the pigs and chopping the barbecue, or they're trying to sell the plates, and that's work. That's work for them. This time, our community is pulling together to feed them and their families. There are around 1,400 first responders in Onslow County, and so we are reaching out to the corporate citizens in our community, or those individuals that might be civic-minded that want to help, and we just want to provide, after the dedication of the Public Safety Memorial at 4:00, at 5:00 PM here on these grounds, an opportunity for that first responder community, the volunteers, and the paid professionals, not only in Onslow County government, but also our municipalities, Richlands, Jacksonville, Swansboro. If they're a first responder inside Onslow County, we would love to invite them, would love to invite you, gentlemen, and your families, to come out and please have a meal on us. It would be our honor to serve you once. And Commissioners, thank you for the direction. There are other things we're offering, free entrance to the museum that week, and reduced price on pet adoptions at our animal shelter. You can have a new best friend. So we thank you, and do invite corporate citizens and members of the community to join us in celebration of this with no local taxpayer money.
And I also acquired four rounds of golf for those golfers that are in the audience. I noticed, I see they're perking up there from Bear Trail. They're going to give us four rounds of golf for four different individuals. That I got yesterday.
And hopefully, by the 16th, we'll have many more prizes, but we are accepting monetary contributions also.
Which are tax-deductible, by the way, made payable to Onslow County government and the foreline, first responder appreciation. Thank you for that moment, Madam Chair. I appreciate that. Item four, presentations, A proclamations, two, Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, September 2015. At this time, I'll read the proclamation into the record. State of North Carolina, County of Onslow, proclamation, Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, September 2015. Whereas suicide is one of the most disruptive and tragic losses a family and community can experience, and whereas suicide has become the leading cause of death in Onslow County for residents under the age of 55, and whereas suicide prevention, awareness, education, and action do save lives, and whereas the Onslow County Suicide Prevention Task Force was recently founded to raise public awareness, align community efforts, educate, advocate, and leverage existing resources, all recognized as vital to preventing further suffering and loss of life, and whereas our community must actively develop collaborative partnerships and resources to increase awareness of this tragic problem, destigmatize the perception of individuals and families affected by suicide, and seek to develop and implement dynamic, integrated measures to prevent suicide. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the Onslow County Board of Commissioners acknowledges the month of September as Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, and calls upon all citizens, educators, community agencies, faith groups, mental and physical healthcare professionals, elected leaders, and businesses to join us in recognizing suicide as a complex but preventable public health issue in our community, presented this 21st day of September 2015. Ms. Dawn Rochelle, representing the Onslow County Suicide Prevention Task Force, will accept the proclamation. Chairman Eichner requests that Vice Chairman Buchanan present the proclamation. Mr. Vice Chairman.
This is, you know, it's one of those plagues that-- And you're talking about dealing with suicides, myself, WC, we were talking about this earlier on, and Jack, too, and some of the officers in the audience here. We probably work more suicides than we work homicides. They're devastating for us when we work these cases. I worked as an evidence tech for about four years, and I can tell you that they're more devastating to deal with than a homicide because when you're dealing with the families, it's very, very, very hard for them, and they don't understand it. And if you look at the textbook that we learn from all these things, it's a textbook on how they do it and why they do it. Ours is to try to prevent it. And Dawn Rochelle, and even today, I was talking to Dawn earlier, the chief in air called me, and we've been back and forth on the phone, trying to find some training to bring into Onslow County for all of our public safety people. We're not talking about just law enforcement, we're talking about our paramedics and our firefighters, to make sure that we can get this across to what's going on. And the key to it is, and Dawn has been very successful in this, I mean, you brought that one gentleman, I can't even remember his name right now, but you could share--
Dr. Feldman.
And he did a really good job for the people that went to those classes that day. Dawn?
Well, and I appreciate the Commissioners recognizing this, because we certainly want suicide to be a word that we can openly say, and one that we can openly acknowledge is a concern and an issue in our community. We want, if folks are thinking those thoughts, to know that there are people here, and we want to have protocols in place in the way that we have established our Child Advocacy Center and other community efforts. You know, many times, we wait as a community for others to come and help us, but we know we have the talent in our community, and that has certainly been represented in the several meetings that we have already held. Some of you are in this room, and I appreciate the community agencies that have stepped up to the bat, and with no promise of additional resources, meaning money, we're still moving forward, and we're doing things, and we can't wait to release some of those efforts to the community. So thank you.
Thank you.
Item five, general items. Item A, North Carolina Governor's Highway Safety Program. Sheriff Hans Miller is available to present this item to the board and answer any questions the board may have. Chair.
Madam Chair, Honorable Board, thank you for the opportunity to address this board this evening. This is an opportunity, first of all, let me say that the Sheriff's Office is very involved in cooperation with our other first responders in the county, as well as we're a member of the Suicide Prevention Task Force. It takes cooperation from all to reduce the bad things that people do to themselves and to others. Tonight, I stand in front of you with an opportunity to bring taxpayer money to Onslow County with a minimal charge. We have an opportunity to bring a grant to Onslow County to replace dated equipment that we have using, that we are using at this point. To clarify, we lose more young people, and old people, and middle-aged people on the highways than for any other cause. Injuries and economic losses, reducing deaths is our mission. As law enforcement officers, we have an obligation to serve the citizens of this county, of this great county, in every way possible to reduce the deaths on the highway. We have, this year, 21 vehicle-related deaths in Onslow County. Last year, we had 14. We, in Onslow County, we have more people injured and killed in traffic wrecks than those who reported other serious crimes like rape, robbery, aggravated assault, and homicide. This is something that we can do something about with the proper tools, with the proper training, and yes, we do have a great training resource, Coastal Carolina Community College, which we're going to be focusing on. We have been receiving, I have received numerous complaints from the people of the county, in the unincorporated areas of the county, people speeding through the neighborhoods. Now, I have to say properly, the North Carolina State Highway Patrol is the premier traffic enforcement organization in the state. enforcement organization in the state, but they can't be everywhere, they're very short-staffed, they focus on the highways. A lot of times, we get complaints from the neighborhoods where children are playing. We get complaints from people that are speeding through school zones. We can do something about it with the proper tools, with the proper training, and this is our mission. The complaints, we handle them properly. I like to get the complaints because I like to focus the assets that we have in the proper place, because citizens need to be served. We also have been very, to let the board know, been very involved in traffic safety education. We have a very young population because of the military here in Onslow County. We have been on base, providing traffic safety education to units when we have been asked to do so. I've been at the air station myself and provided that kind of education. We will continue to do so. Also, when we get a call from a school administration about traffic-related issues, we focus on that area and we do something about it. The assets that we're asking for is a replacement for something that we already have, the radar units, and radar is, and I can spend the time in explaining detail the science behind the radar. It basically allows the trained law enforcement officer to make accurate measurements of the speed of a arriving or departing vehicle. There is science behind that, and training is necessary. But our radar units that we now have in stock are going to be obsolete starting next year, and we've been told that we have to replace them with state-of-the-art radar units, which I, as a career law enforcement officer, am in support of because the technology continues to adjust upward. So, we do not currently have a traffic section per se, we do have two trained officers that their main focus is on traffic-related issues in the county, and they are both trained in radar and other traffic-related issues like aggressive driving. Aggressive driving and texting while driving are violations that get people hurt or sometimes get people killed, and we want that to be reduced, if not go away, totally. So I would say to the board this evening, thank you for the opportunity to be here, to answer questions. I'll be assisted with any details that you may want to know, what cost a human life. For $6,000 contribution of county tax money, we can have $18,750 money coming from Raleigh to assist us in something that we should all agree on is necessary in the county. The police departments are doing it, the Highway Patrol is doing it, the Sheriff's Office, I've talked with fellow sheriffs all over the state, they're doing it as well. I feel an obligation, I feel a responsibility to the good people of Onslow County to keep the roads safe and do it properly. That doesn't mean we're going to have quotas, there will be no quotas for any traffic tickets. So I just wanted to let the public know that there will be no quotas. Enforcement action is defined as sometimes a nonverbal warning, reduces speed if it happens, if it reduces the speed, that might be a good thing, maybe a traffic stop in some cases. I've done that on my way home if I see a traffic violation. I do a traffic stop, I don't carry tickets, but I give a warning, and a lot of times a warning will do it. Written warnings, or maybe in some case of severe cases, a citation must be issued, and it will be up to a judge to decide the validity of it. But this is not something that has just been created in Onslow County. This is just a replacement for dated equipment that we have to replace because we've been told that the dated equipment is going to be obsolete next year. I ask for your support. I know there's a lot of experience on this board, willing to answer any questions, and I thank you for your service, and please give us that support so we can do the job and keep this county a little bit safer, one person at a time. If we can save one human life, it would be worth it. Any questions, Honorable Board?
Madam Chair, I have a question. It's our policy to have a motion on the floor before we go to discussion. Do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the Governor's Highway Safety Grant.
I have a motion, do I have a second? I have a motion, do I have a second? Here in no second, the item fails due to the lack of a second. Thank you, Sheriff.
I am disappointed.
Item five B is an item that's been added to the board's agenda this evening by vote of the Commissioners, is FBO lease. Madam Chair, I'll present this item myself.
Please do.
Earlier this year, Onslow County issued a request for proposals for a fixed space operator to operate the business that's at Albert JLS Airport. We are pleased to report to you that we have successfully negotiated the long-term lease with Skyport Holdings Jacksonville LLC. The concessions offered to Onslow County by Skyport Holdings Jacksonville LLC include the following: $750,000 capital investment toward the construction of a new executive terminal, which we are very close to issuing a permanent certificate of occupancy for. In fact, we anticipate that that permanent certificate of occupancy will be issued one week from today, on Monday. $8 per square foot lease for finished space, $750,000 plus that $8 per square foot approximately equates to the current market rate of $15 per square foot for rented space. 3% of gross receipts except fuel sales and aircraft engines estimated to be about $15,000 annually, $600,000 approximately to construct a new maintenance and storage hangar, $5,000 annually for leasing the fuel farm and assuming maintenance on the fuel farm. And as a side note, we have also agreed to post cameras around the fuel farm, which is on county property, and we wish to make sure that any spills are appropriately tracked to whichever party was responsible for those spills. $42,284 annually for leasing the aircraft apron, $3,000 annually for land lease for the maintenance and storage hangar, and then $4 per square foot for unfinished space following Skyport securing of a tenant for a period of time, actually, after they would secure a tenant, they would begin paying $4 per square foot for that space, and that $4 per square foot would continue up until the point of 10 years, or such a time when the fuel volume reaches an agreed-upon level, whichever of those milestones is reached first. Thereafter, the per-square-footage rate for the unfinished space, the currently unfinished space, would be the equivalent of the space rate that's in the rest of the executive terminal. They've also agreed to start a flight school within 60 days of the opening of the executive terminal, to begin maintenance operations within 60 days of opening the executive terminal, and certainly they wish to grow the FBO service portfolio to increase the number of private airplanes that would be housed at Albert JLS Airport, to increase the number of landing fees collected, and basically, as Skyport Holdings Jacksonville would grow, so would the economic engine of Albert JLS Airport. With more planes located and based here in Onslow County, we receive more property taxes, and that's certainly a benefit to Onslow County. The lease that has been prepared, has been prepared in conjunction with Ms. Moxley's office, I'm pleased to report to you that we do have in hand a fully executed lease by Skyport Holdings of Jacksonville in accordance with all of the terms that we have negotiated. Therefore, the action request, Madam Chair, members of the board, that's on the sheet before you, is to approve the lease of the FBO to Skyport Holdings Jacksonville LLC.
Motion to approve the lease with Skyport Holdings Jacksonville.
I have a motion, and I have a second.
Is there any discussion? Any questions about the contract? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And thank you, Mr. Manager, for your work in bringing that forth.
Item six, Appointments. Onslow County Hospital Authority Board. The Onslow County Hospital Authority Board serves as the governing body of Onslow Memorial Hospital, and as such, is responsible for the daily operations and long-range improvements of the facility and all related health services. At its regularly scheduled meeting on July 28, 2015, the Onslow County Hospital Authority voted unanimously to forward nominations for consideration for reappointment of incumbents whose terms expire September 30, 2015. At the July 28 meeting, the authority also voted unanimously to submit Dr. William Darner's name in the event that Dr. D'Angelo could not be submitted due to her being a resident of Craven County. This additional name is now being submitted in compliance with Section 7 of the amended and restated resolution dated July 16, 2012. The following four individuals are asked to be considered for the three available seats by the hospital authority. Ms. Elizabeth Atkins, incumbent, seat number one, Mr. Jamie McLaughlin, incumbent, seat number seven, Mr. Stephen Scarborough, incumbent, seat number 10, and Mr. William "Bill" Darner, additional names submitted. Staffs prepared ballots for the board's convenience, all applications are on file and have been certified by the clerk's office.
At this time, I would like to ask the board, is the board prepared to move forward with the vote?
Yes.
Okay. Then mark your ballots and pass them forward. As the manager is tallying the votes, I will give an explanation. Our board has a contract or an agreement, as it is, with the board of authority over the hospital. These openings have been posted since July 27, and it is the agreement between the boards that the hospital board will submit a list of names. They can submit more, but we have a minimum of names of qualified applicants. The names that have been submitted are qualified. The deadline on the terms is September 30. At this time, the names before us are the ones that are going to be evaluated. These names will stay active even if the applicant is not chosen for one year. In September of next year, there will be more openings on the board, and I hope those people that were wishing to have their name submitted will get their applications to the clerk in a timely manner. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, the board has selected Ms. Elizabeth Atkins for seat number one with the term expiring September 30, 2018. As Ms. Atkins has been chosen for seat number one, Ms. Atkins' name has been struck from seat number seven and seat number 10. The ballot being handed out by the county attorney now is for seat number seven. If the board will complete the ballot for seat number seven, they'll be collected and tallied. The Commissioners have chosen Mr. Jamie McLaughlin for seat number seven with the term expiring September 30, 2018. Therefore, his name will be stricken from the seat number 10 ballot, as well as Ms. Atkins' name stricken from the seat number 10 ballot. You're receiving pink ballots now for seat number 10 Commissioners, if you will complete those ballots. Prior to revealing the vote for seat number 10, I would like to inform the audience and members of the public that might be watching by television that ballots are provided to the Commissioners as a convenience only. The ballots are available for public inspection immediately following the meeting from the clerk's office. Ms. Heather Norris is the Assistant Clerk to the board, and she will have the ballots and all sheets. All ballots are required to be signed by the Commissioner that was casting the ballot. So therefore, this process is transparent to the public and is available immediately following the meeting. The Commissioners have chosen Mr. Stephen Scarborough for seat number 10 with the term expiring September 30, 2018. Madam Chair, that concludes item A, Onslow County Hospital Authority Board.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Please continue.
Item B, Consolidated Human Services Advisory Committee. On June 10, 2013, the Board of Commissioners adopted Resolution 13-10 in order to consolidate the provision of social services and health department functions under county government pursuant to Session Law 2012-126, House Bill 438. In accordance with the requirements of House Bill 438, Resolution 13-10 also provides for the creation of a Health Advisory Committee, membership of which is consistent with North Carolina General Statute 138-35. The 11 members, as established by North Carolina General Statutes, shall reasonably reflect the population of Onslow County, and shall include one physician licensed to practice in North Carolina, one licensed dentist, one licensed optometrist, one licensed veterinarian, one registered nurse, one licensed pharmacist, one's Onslow County Commissioner, one professional engineer, and three representatives of the general public. Mr. Robert Swindell, General Category Seat 3, has resigned due to relocating to New Hanover County. Dr. Gina Francis has expressed an interest in this seat and has provided assistance participation application. The specific action requested is to respectfully consider appointing Dr. Gina Francis, General Category Seat Number 3, for a remaining three-year term expiring November 18, 2017.
What's the board's pleasure?
So moved.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
That concludes item six.
Okay. We had nothing pulled from the consent agenda, so let's have our second public comment. I believe we have some people signed up, Mr. Manager?
Yes, Madam Chair, this is the second public comment period. During the second public comment period, there's a five-minute time limit. In accordance with the board's rules of procedure, Commissioners shall reserve responses, if any, for the Commissioner comment period at the end of the agenda. Citizens shall have the opportunity to talk about any issue upon which the Board of Commissioners have control. The first individual that signed up to speak is Stacy Caudill of 577 Holly Shelter Road, Lot 7, Jacksonville. You have the podium, Ms. Caudill, for a time period not to exceed 5. You have the podium, Ms. Cordell, for a time period not to exceed five minutes.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'd like to start off by saying thank you for allowing me to speak, and I'd like to thank you, Mr. Hudson, for pronouncing my last name correctly. It doesn't happen often. I'd like to address this committee regarding the Onslow County Sheriff's Department or the lack thereof. We have been, I have been led to believe that the Onslow County Sheriff's Department budget has not been cut. I've further been led to believe that Sheriff Miller, in the past, has requested 14 additional deputies and 10 jailers to answer calls, serve and protect the good residents of Onslow County, and watch and protect those who are incarcerated. I've been led to believe he was denied by this committee. I was also led to believe that he reduced that request, and again, he was denied. I was led to further believe that Sheriff Miller requested more personnel, at which time this very committee denied him once again, but so graciously offered him one. The current response time on any given day in my neighborhood is an hour and a half to two hours. That's unacceptable. Sunday, October 13 of 2015, I placed a call to Onslow County Sheriff's Department regarding a home invasion upon my return from a weekend trip. I had every reason to assume that the perpetrator was still inside my home. The response time was over an hour and a half. That is unacceptable. It is even more unacceptable to be told the response time took so long because they're understaffed. If the budget is there, Onslow County Sheriff's Department needs more deputies on the payroll and on the road to protect and serve the residents of Onslow County. If that budget is not being utilized to protect and serve the residents of Onslow County, what and whose personal agenda is it being used for? You are elected officials whose best interests should be to look out for the citizens of Onslow County, and you can be voted out if that's not what your agenda is to do. I will make it my personal mission to contact every news outlet and have as many Onslow County residents at the next meeting and every meeting thereafter, demanding more staff for the Sheriff's Department to be hired and put on the roads and tell our needs are met and fulfilled. Let me leave you with one last thing. When you lay your head down at nighttime, remember this: Due to your failure to do what's best in the interest in protecting Onslow County residents, the way the world is heading, I will not say if, but when someone breaks into my home. I cannot and will not wait an hour and a half for someone to respond. So remember, you, as Commissioners, are forcing my hand. Where I live, I am 911, and I would appreciate being put on the payroll if I have to do that job. I know that Sheriff Miller is here, and I want him to hear me say and know that I, that there are volunteer EMTs and firefighters. I'm here, ready, willing, and able to volunteer my time to protect the citizens of Onslow County. Commissioners, it is now time to potty or get off the pot. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's the only individual that signed up for the second public comment period, Madam Chair.
Mr. Manager, do you have some comments for the Board tonight?
Madam Chair, I don't have any comments this evening. Thank you.
Commissioner comments. I'll start with Mr. Bright.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Appreciate the opportunity. I want to thank the physicians that came tonight and come and spoke about the hospital authority. As Chairman had mentioned, the reason we have to follow the rules and the guidelines, and we didn't have the names submitted, so we had to go with what we, what we had. But I really appreciate the, the doctors that came tonight and put their time in this. I know their time is valuable, and yours is valuable too, and I appreciate you coming. And I think you were here to support Regina, Dr. Francis also, so thank you for-
We'll have to delay this evening.
Thank, thank you for coming, and appreciate you coming up and speaking, and maybe down the road, we can look at the possibility, I don't know exactly what the rules are now, but maybe the hospital authority can meet with us, and maybe we can add another Board member so we can put that person into, I think Dr. Johnson mentioned that, and it's probably a good idea, and maybe we can add another person without taking somebody else's seat. But the hospital is really, really critical now with the merger, and the people that's there need to be on, on standby with what the new procedures will be far as the consolidation, and it's good for them to have the history of the hospital and not have exactly somebody new for the whole Board, but that's why they have staggered terms. But other than that, and I appreciate the lady from, that spoke regarding our Sheriff's Department and for the need for additional deputies. I can tell you, I've been in the business before, and you can have, you could probably double the size of the force, but you still wouldn't actually have what you actually need, but it's a tremendous amount of resources that's needed and required for law enforcement and our first responders too, and you can't leave out the volunteer firefighters in the community, how valuable they are, and we're going to have a ceremony to honor those folks in October, and, but I do appreciate you coming and making us aware of how people out in the community feel about responders and stuff. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. Mr. Bright, Ms. Williams?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. And I will say, the comments that came forth from the citizens, I hear you speaking, and I acknowledge you. So I thank you for being here to share what's going on in your community and see in the future some of the things that are going on that we can possibly look at as a Board, so I thank you. Secondly, I'd like to share with the audience, those that are here this evening and those that are watching by TV, I just want to remind the citizens of Onslow County, we have a brand-new airport, and it is a beautiful facility. If you've not had the opportunity to take a flight as of yet, but I will let you know there is a term in the industry that's called leakage, and that's where Onslow County citizens, and I know sometimes finances are tight for all of us at times, but what happens, a number of potential people that can actually go through OHA, which is, you know, our airport, they fly out of Wilmington and out of Raleigh. But I would just say to be mindful when you're flying out, to think of our new airport and support our airport. It's there for our citizens, and I am telling you, if you've not gone, take the trip out there to see what the airport looks like. And I appreciate the doctors being here this evening, and, and I agree just with Commissioner Bright had stated, you know, there's a timeframe involved, and, and I also concur with the fact that maybe we can add a slot, and, and that would open that up, but I think timing is critical, and we've got to find, I mean, we've got to follow guidelines as well. And to the first responders out there in the audience and those that are watching, I know we have a fine group of responders. My husband and I have had to utilize your services because he was sick, so I know personally, not just a Commissioner, but as a citizen, utilizing the services. So from the bottom of my heart, I thank you for who you are and what you provide to this community, because there's a lot of things going on throughout our country, and I am grateful to God that we have the relationship that we do with the first responders in this community. So I acknowledge them tonight, I applaud you, and even your families out there, because when your loved ones are out there, you're at home wanting to know that they come home alive. So with that, I would say good night, Madam Chair, and I'm done.
Thank you. Mr. Jarman?
I'd say they've already said it all, and I just would want to say so. I think the two sitting over there behind the desk that worked all weekend on that lease, I think both of you have done a good job, and I appreciate it.
Thank you. Vice Chair?
I appreciate it. Well, thank everybody for coming, and, and I appreciate the lady talking about what the citizens' concerns are, but I think you might want to look into a little bit more facts. One of the things that we did as County Commissioners, this Board, is that we went ahead and did a fair-market analysis for our deputy sheriffs. They were the first ones we did. They are the highest paid in this county at $38,000 starting salary. We also told our telecommunications and made their salaries a lot higher. First responders, we did a lot of work with those individuals, and they're just pieces of the puzzle. There's a lot of stuff to this puzzle. We will look into what your concerns are, but we have to deal with what we have at hand, and one of the first things we did was looked out for the Sheriff's Department for their salaries, and we had to look out for them and their families. That's the first part of the money market that we did, but then there was other groups that we're doing right now. I think there's another 300, and my HR director's sitting out there, and it's going to take, what, two more years, I think, before we actually get all our county employees at the fair-market rate, and that's what we're trying to do. And it takes time to do that, and it does take money, but we're doing everything we can to help everybody in the county, not just one agency. So I thank you for your information. Thank you for being here.
I just have a couple comments. First, thank you, doctors, for coming tonight. I understand how important your voices would be, and I hope whether you are a member of that Board, that you would try to work with that Board, the hospital Board, and get your input with those Board members. I do believe those Board members have the best interest of the hospital in mind, and perhaps even though you missed the deadline this year, we could add an additional seat. We'll have to check into the legality of that, that could possibly help you, but if not so, next year's coming, there will be four vacancies next September on that Board, and you will have an opportunity to get your applications in and to be considered. However, in order for us to consider you, we have to have it recommended, your name recommended, from the hospital Board. So please work within the system and, and see if we can get some changes that would benefit our citizens. Also, tonight, I truly feel your pain with your home break-in. I know how frustrating that must have been for you, and to have to sit there and wait an hour, an hour and a half, I know that that's hard for a citizen to do, and that's why I am so concerned that we are utilizing the manpower in order to fight crime and to answer calls and be available for citizens' needs. I recognize that there is a problem with speeders on our roads and fatalities. We have a population of very young people. Our average age is like 23 and a half, and when you've got young people, they're impatient to get everywhere, and they speed, and a lot of our military. So there are some ways to have high visibility, but we never need to forget, our first obligation in law enforcement is to be there to solve the crimes, and we have a tremendous drug problem in this county, and I would hope that the utilization of the manpower that is there would be used to the best benefit for the citizens. If there's nothing else to be said tonight, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Aye.
Second, this meeting is adjourned.